The diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's February third, two thousand fourteen, at seven P. M., the Regent Lee Greenberg County Council has called order at this time to question how the county tries to be sound and patient.
Glenn.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Daryl.
Here.
Jane.
You want to press the gentleman? Would you like to touch on the minutes where you're at?
I will get, we'll have everybody who knows yet this week, get an updated copy of the government and all June, well, not all June, maybe February due since it's short.
Old business, one old business we have is a request contribution profits. Making the discussion, gentlemen?
I would think we've got to take one of them. I like, yes.
I guess I'd just maybe like to make a comment. I think you guys know where I stand on some of these, or at least my opinion on, you know, I just think we've got to make sure we're spending tax dollars in the wisest way, doing the right thing, and maybe instead of the city council looking at all these funds individually in different departments and different charitable organizations and trying to determine who deserves what and when we give them that, maybe we look at donating a sum of money to an organization like the Community Foundation and allowing them to determine what organizations get the money through a grant process. You know, I mean, and I, you know, rather than, I mean, if we give out all this money that's requested today, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. You know, I'm sure it was close to that last year with what we gave out, and, you know, rather than giving out that kind of money each year, I think if we would be more prudent to say, let's take seventy-five percent of that or, and give that to the Community Foundation and allow the different non-profit organizations to address them through a grant.
Well. I'm not sure that that's any different than what we're doing.
But it is. I mean, if, one, it takes up city time, we have a special meeting every year, all right? We're going through all these and we're trying to determine who's more worthy than the other. I think the Dehater County Community Foundation has a great grant process in place where they have to submit things, everybody would be on equal footing, they would be submitting it, and it would be reviewed by a board that already looks at grants over and over and over, so they would be, you know, I think they would be more ju- they would be judged more equally on their merit. It's just my opinion on this, I mean.
Having, having served as a foundation board and done that, I don't know that it's any more fair or equitable or however you wanted to describe it in terms of, we ask for the same kind of things they ask, would ask for, budget, what's your purpose, what you can spend it on, what kind of tracker do you have, and so forth, they're, they're looking at the same kind of things we've already asked for in this case. And I don't know that it's proper, you know, there's a couple of, there's a couple of things on here that are, quite like governmental, more or less, and I'm not sure that that's exactly the business that I mentioned either.
Maybe we don't do all of them. I like EDC, okay? We, we wouldn't, maybe we won't put EDC into that group, but.
Well.
But I'm just saying, I, I think if we continue down this path, we're going to have every non-for-profit organization in here asking for money, and, you know, quite frankly, they're silly if they don't. I mean, look what we're doing every year, right? If there's a non-for-profit organization and they're not in here asking for money, they're silly, because look what we're doing. And I, that's how I feel, and I'm just, this bothers me, and I don't think what we're doing the best thing with the money that we have as, as, as stewardship for this money. That's my opinion.
Well, I, I think we can maybe have that discussion and pursue, pursue whether we do it that, a different way in the future. Tonight, we're really, we're not, unable, I don't think it's, I don't think you're suggesting that we do all this tonight, that we just.
No, no, I, it's a little late to probably do that for this year's funds, so I, I do, I mean, we, I think we have to figure out how we're going to pursue this differently in the future. I just.
I personally like that idea of doing something like that, and maybe we need to look at that at budget time, and budget X amount of dollars for that. That being said, you're right, Glenn, on a lot of these organizations are governmental, you know, for economic development, and some, two, maybe two or three others, but on these other non-for-profits, I think that would be something to be worth looking at.
Well, if I, if I may, just from a legal perspective, I'm not sure exactly how the state or the council would feel about you giving money to one organization and then directing that organization to give it to other people. I mean, you would have zero control over, I, it's certainly something that I would suggest if you're going to go down that route, that we engage that, that state organization.
On the shirt, it's our conversations. And, and, and we'd certainly want you to do that.
Right.
The matter and is what we're going to do with this tonight, you know, if we're going to move that we take care of this at budget time, we'll discuss this in July, August, September.
I'm just laying out what my thoughts are. The other part of that is, is, you know, how many of these organizations are already getting money from the county, which is, you know, everybody in the city is already paying county tax, so we're already paying part of these funds, and then we're going to turn around and give them more money, so. I'm, I'm done, I'm just wasting my heartburn, so.
Okay. So are we going to take these at the top, or how are we going to deal with them? Yeah, I guess, do we, do we make a consensus to do it one at a time?
Yes.
Yes.
Well. First and on the, on the top is the Greenberg Schools, right?
I would move that we move forward with paying the five thousand this school, that's a benefit to the city and the taxpayer. Second.
Next item.
Are we going to make a, are we going to vote for one?
Do a motion.
A second.
Okay. Entertaining motion for schools ourselves.
Yeah, we got it. Like, certified, like, second.
We make the motion.
Daryl.
Daryl, make the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion passes, thank you.
And, just a point of clarification, are we, we haven't designated what fund this comes out of, do you want to do that in the vote, in the, do motions, or do we go back and, and do that?
What do we take that one out of?
My side. Riverboat. Riverboat.
Riverboat. I guess I just assume unless we think differently, we'll probably take them on the same fund we did last year. Doesn't have to.
Set it. Do we have a consensus to take out a fund for this?
I'll make a motion that the money we spend this year on these comes out of the same fund that it came out of last year.
April, Jamie, second, Terry, opposed, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Which one do you have next, Matt?
I got Big Brothers, Big Sisters, that's on my list, that's the next one I had, and I just, ten thousand dollars. No, no, I'm not moving, I'm upset about ten thousand dollars, I'm not moving, I'd move for five. I'll make a motion to be given, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, five thousand.
Okay. Discussion. Discussion.
I'm sorry, Glenn, did you second that?
I, I think through the presentation, Big Brothers, Big Sisters gave, they were, they were budgeting five for what, their real budget, they're looking to see what happens at the bowling tournament, and if they can, if everything comes in like it should, then five should be sufficient.
So last year they did have to return, they gave them five.
There's a lot of factors that can play into the, plus the show up or the turnout at the bowling tournament's going to be, so I'm comfortable with, with five.
That's a discussion, correct?
Do you want to amend the motion to allow them now to come back if they need more, or do you think that's just, that's acceptable if they want to come back?
I don't want to amend my motion.
Okay.
I have fun.
Call for a vote, discussion.
We're looking for discussion.
If there isn't, call those in favor, the motion, right? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion passes.
You got this, Jim.
I got Small Business Development Centers, what I've got next, for five thousand dollars. I'm not opposed to that. I'll make a motion that we give them the five thousand dollars to Small Business Development Center.
Jamie, second by Terry. For discussion? If you think none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. She passes.
Just to clarify, that is a funds, I know it was from last year, but this one, this one's.
No, it was Riverboat. Small Business Centers, Riverboats. The only edits that I changed was, well. Yeah, all right.
Small Business came in, edited on Friday.
Edited, yeah.
Big Brothers, Sisters came from?
From Riverboat.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And Schools was Riverboat. Small Business was Edit, Big Brothers was Riverboat, Catch a Ride was Riverboat, New Directions was Riverboat, EDC was Edit.
Thank you, Greensburg.
Greensburg Learning Center, I know these aren't the same word, Greensburg Learning Center was Edit Funds. Lane Street was Edit Funds. Rude Life was Riverboat Funds.
So New Directions is the next one I have on my list, requesting twenty thousand. Last year we gave them fifteen, we gave them the opportunity to come back for the additional five, you know. I, I wouldn't be opposed to giving them ten, I don't want to give them twenty, I, I don't think, you know, I, I was opposed to giving them the other five, I think we have to start pushing back to make them be more self-sufficient, some of these other organizations, and it's not that they don't offer a great service to our community, I just, we have to start scrutinizing the money we spend.
Well, I think that they have demonstrated that they are seeking funds and grants and building, seeking every opportunity to find resources. They've demonstrated that in, in their, look at the financial, they seem to provide a, a real service in terms of prevention as well as helping in times of crisis, and they've demonstrated that we've done letters of support from the police department, stating what kind of a positive resource they are for them. So I guess I see it as something that does contribute to the well-being of the community. Too bad that we haven't had it, but it does, does contribute, and I, I would support the fund. I, I agree with you, maybe in a sense that there probably is a limit, and I don't know, I can't say exactly what that is, I just think in terms of what resources we have at present, what services are provided, I think that that request is portioned, is good.
May I? Absolutely. You know, I have seen results, and with what the police chief, information she's given us, is, it saves the city, police department, the jail, the court system, a lot of time and effort, and I think probably what might be part of the problem is, they're working so hard and trying to do such a good job, they keep implementing programs, just takes time and money, and, you know, I commend them for their effort, how much can they actually afford to do, you know, we want to do what you can effectively efficient of. My preference, opinion is I wouldn't cut them to ten thousand, maybe reduce it to fifteen, I strongly recommend that they find the single sources, at least this year, instead of just cutting them off and sending them, you can make them what you have, and if you're what you have to cut right now, that would have a little time to plan. That's, I mean, it's have a good conversation, get your last minute to that.
I, I don't mean to sound cold and callous, and that's not my intent, I just.
We want our community to be as thriving and as efficient, the best community in the world, and a lot of times that does take money, how much money do we have, how much will we link in?
There's, there's a reason there's five of us on the council, but it's not one person pushing their opinion, it's just so that way we can, you know, when we have different opinions, we can talk about them and discuss them, and then, you know, what's good for the community is going to prevail.
Yes.
And I'm just say, stating my opinion as, I mean, we have to be steward to the taxpayers' money, and I, I just don't feel doing the right things with the money that we're giving out year after year after year, and I just, I struggle with it, and that's my personal opinion on it, I don't mean to be cold or callous towards any of the organizations, I think they're all worthwhile, and I think we need them all, I just.
And I personally look at how many people on the table, how many volunteers they have, how many people you have, they actually have working for a company or, they have, how many people on the table? This small amount, and once you do work, it pays more.
Okay, so we've got a twenty thousand, a ten thousand, and it's cost back, back and forth here, was the last year we did fifteen, and gave them the opportunity to come back for five.
And then we gave them the other five.
And then we gave them the other five.
I will say this, every non-for-profit needs to be doing everything they can to bridge it to the amount that the city can, like Jamie said.
Let's well, we're, in the past, the city pays county tax, part of our tax revenue lies there, and then we're giving it again. How much is this that Greensburg's supposed to give? Twice the budget people in county are, have given, must deliver. The county people says, are there, contributions to their taxes, to the budget.
Personally, I would support the same thing we did last year, fifteen thousand with the opportunity to come back for five more. At least there's a little incentive there.
For what criteria are we going to put on it when they come back for five, or are we just going to say, well, if they come back and ask, we're going to give it to them? That's, I, I guess that's why, I, I mean, I, I guess I don't like the idea of saying, with the, with the opportunity of coming back and asking for more, let's give it to them, or let's not give it to them, because when they come back, we, I don't know that we turn anybody down, and we don't really scrutinize why we're asking for that additional funding, I, I just.
But you have that opportunity.
I, I know, and I just, my opinion, that's all.
I think people should show that they've done the best they can, and they've worked hard, they can't do anymore, and then we're going to last year, we should be putting budget every year, it's part of our budget, we're here to help, not come up with a solution every year.
I mean, just to be clear, this Riverboat money is not coming out of, of taxes.
But it's given.
It's money that could be used for other funds, it's money that can be used for other projects, and then we could take that money and sell it in other funds.
Do we have other projects that do, part of this River, Riverboat money is, you can't have it as dependable stream to, it has to be more episodic rather than continuous or sequential, because it's, we don't get a, a regular amount, we don't know how much we're going to get from year to year, so we have some built up. My point was, you know, it's not, yes, it isn't given to the city to use for the well-being of the city, for a variety of purposes, this being one of, one of them in my favor.
And revenue from Riverboats, about sixty, seventy thousand a year.
Yeah.
Bridget, how, how much is in that kill now? Written online. I checked, any day.
Rainy Day has five hundred eighty-seven thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars and eighteen cents.
Rainy Day's five hundred thirty-seven thousand.
Five hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars and eighteen cents, that's Rainy Day.
Rainy.
Rainy Day.
That's what's there for the state, maybe, the state is here.
That's right.
Or Snowy Days.
Well, we may have, yeah.
Yeah.
Add, add some salt.
And Riverboat has four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seventy-six dollars and fifty-nine cents.
I'd move if we get fifteen thousand, the possibility for them to come back and ask for more, and get the five thousand, uh, in later date, and I would first, to really do your due diligence and be as prudent as possible.
Do we have a motion?
The money's been coming in, it's a motion. To mitigate, maybe against that, we could come in for the other five. That's second motion.
Motion paper, Blake, second by Daryl, for the discussion. Terry, none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye.
Aye.
I got the Learning Centers, next one, fifteen thousand, now a minute.
Discussion, counsel.
That's one of our best kept secrets there, I, I think we should support the Learning Center, so, used by the industries here in town. Private use, we're funding that fifteen thousand.
That motion?
Uh, yeah, that's a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Daryl, second by Blake, for the discussion, counsel. Terry, none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. She passes.
EDC, sixty thousand. So is there any prospect of EDC becoming self-sufficient, or, I don't know, funds, I mean, are we going to give sixty thousand dollars every year for how long?
I started out thirty thousand in one year, Glenn, and I think we become self-sufficient, that's never happened.
I like it.
I like that too.
I mean, it's possible, theoretically it's possible, places do, it's just that I don't know that it's, I mean, I'm not a part of it in any, in a way, I watched years ago the board, and, you know, it's, they've done it in more recent years, they've gotten a little more, um, support from, from industry and, and others, but, um, there's some, part of the, part of the thing with, with industry is that they can be supportive of it, but it comes to a point where, um, supporting it too far, kind of puts it in their own interests sometimes, or if you pull in outside businesses who may want to be a part of economic development or business development, then some of these outside interests are competing with some of our localized that are on there, so, I mean, there are just some natural kind of tension that I'm not, I'm not sure that you're ever going to get to the point of, of making it self-sufficient in, in this community, and some places have to be places you could, but see if you're.
There's eighteen members on the board, and to increase the membership of what is now, I believe, is two thousand, thirty-five hundred dollar membership, you have to factor from the amount of membership that you had, and so I think that pretty low to limit there. I mean, Mark was very involved in what we're going to be doing tonight, and finish this, his contributions up, he's in Irvine, California today, I called him at eight o'clock this morning, he's, he's time out there, and he said, well, it seems like things I've been wanting to do, that I mean, you don't have to look at California anymore. So, I think you have a great board, it's working with EDC, and they're very supportive, they're very active. I don't think, you know, with Chamber and Mayor's Office and Haight County Courthouse, people could ask about how to expand or bring new business to Greensburg, usually EDC is where they go to, where they come to city hall. It'd be this, this piece of the chain, I think, that you can see.
To go ahead and go echo that, the board covers all facets of business with different memberships, and, um, I think it would be difficult as a way to, to bring in the same types of memberships, because they're already on there, and we're looking at new business who need to get the competition piece, and we have, it's going to be tough to continue to grow the membership, and the levels, I think, we're at, I asked.
Yeah, we have, we have one open seat, so.
There you go, and of course, more, more than that, we have.
Yeah, I, I don't know that there's, that the dollars are, I'm not, I'm not trying to, like, I don't micromanage the dollars and how they go, but I do, I think they are doing the, the job that they're designed to do, or the function that they were given in terms of the purpose, fulfilling that, I think there's, part of that does fall into purview of, I think, what we're looking for, the city could do, in terms of promoting economic development, promoting business, bringing in possibilities of growth. bringing in possibilities of growth, so, I think, spending those dollars, and this is added dollars which has been created to actually do that kind of thing, that's what those dollars were there for, is that kind of purpose, I think, I think we're using the dollars in the proper way, you know, we're not, we're not giving it away to, we're actually giving, spending it on a service that we think's important.
I, I agree with what you're saying, I'm just asking, is that number ever going to decrease, or are we just looking at increasing that number over time? Because, I mean, is there hope that that number's going to de-
I think that'll be looked at at the end of the year, next motion for there. Cause I have some suggestions myself.
I'm just bringing it up, I mean, I absolutely think we have to support the EDC, we need that, we need to bring businesses in and look at growing our community, absolutely, um, I just, just wondering what the future of that is holding, are we gonna continue to spend sixty grand every year, after year after year, or is there a hope that that number's gonna start decreasing? Is there a possibility that that's gonna happen, or are we just looking to fund that?
I think you see a ten or fifteen percent reduction, that would be a great, that would be a great move, if they can increase their, and they are working on things to help their balance. They are working on that, so. And once these goals are accomplished by then, they should be sitting pretty decent for a while. If that happens, we'll say it'd be good for everyone.
I'll move if we get the, the EDC sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
I have made the motion, Daryl second, for the discussion, council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion passes, thank you, I appreciate it.
Main Street, Greensburg, thirty thousand dollars a minute.
That's in our situation, if I can bring you up to date a little bit. At one time, there are two groups here in town, the two groups have combined, and two groups are doing a good job, I believe. The Ontale Foundation has helped subsidize Main Street a little bit, and I'd just like to see if we can, Main Street has taken on their shoulders to do an RFP for maintenance in downtown square, taking a deal off it for the other meeting, aren't I, Daryl?
Sure fine.
And it shows that they're working for downtown, they're just trying to really make this on the, pretty much pay downtown, the shrubs and the flowers and flower beds and things of that nature, to make sure that's maintained and taken care of. So that's money that they're getting contributions from individuals, they're earning some money by selling benches and things like that to courthouse square, and they're trying to do like EDC is, they're trying to maintain the stores being downtown, so, they're doing best to count what they have to do with membership, doesn't cost anything with, uh, Main Street for the purposes.
I've been to several of those meetings too, and they are trying to add those dollars, and they're trying to bring in extra money, they do work pretty hard at it, which is thinking about that.
Selling books.
But they think things are a little tough right now, particularly their outreach is real good.
They've been kind of rate even this year, I believe, they lost four, gained four.
I guess neither is good.
Next motion, we, um, Greensburg, Main Street, thirty thousand dollars. Second.
Thank you, Daryl, second, play, Main Street, thirty thousand, for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion passes, thank you.
Next on the list is Bret Hife, twenty thousand riverboat.
I guess twenty thousand last year, right?
Yeah, last year's one.
No, they did ask for one, we gave one.
And if you look at their budget, you see where, what their plan is for expenditures, there's four thousand dollars difference there, and they're looking to hire another part-time person. And I know things are critically important, make it happen with volunteers, that's my point. If you have any volunteers as possible, definitely pay people on payroll, that's up to you, gentlemen. Two hundred thousand, please, please, that's a hundred thousand dollars. I think, council.
I'm not in favor of giving twenty thousand dollars, I'll, I'll put that out, but, you know, I think we all have our passions, and, and this is certainly a good organization, they do a great service to the community, but, you know, some have passions for the homeless, some have passion for the hungry, and run them down the line. But I, I think twenty thousand's just a little excessive for the city to contribute.
I, I mean, I just don't wanna contribute money so that they can afford to, to pay another salary.
Yes. I think it's important, I'd like to, I believe this, yes.
What I've, I seen was under budget, and the expected that, you know, there's a four thousand dollars to afford a question, and they're all the people that they're pushing on. Then four or five thousand for the part-time person. Twenty-two there, that's huge.
I, I think the prudent thing to do for this council would be to deduct that. What that magic number is, I don't know. Of discussion, I guess.
Gave you five last year, and go to ten this year, double the percentage.
Well, if we did, if we did five last year, I can see as good five films. As David pointed out, it might be some of the years that we can take, a long, long-term look at. I, I would be willing to, if I were to do last year, feed that, if they were new last year, I think it was the first time last year, isn't it?
Yes.
So.
See if I can get the motion for five thousand.
I will.
Second.
Second.
Get the motion to our sector, get five, five thousand, for the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign.
Aye. The next one on my list is Catcha Ride. Couldn't find my, I lost my, I think I left my package piece home. Five thousand.
Five last year.
I think that's what they're, they're, yeah. And that's out of riverboat.
This was like the, uh, small business, I don't know how much, long-term benefit, that, small business, but, but like it, this, these dollars actually serve as matching investment to the, to the, for a thing. And I do think that Catcha Ride is something that some members of our community would need in the summer, and we don't have it, services, or, I think that five thousand's a modest investment, but what it brings, and I have witnessed the Catcha Ride coming and going to industries, factories, and, I don't know what's going to do.
Make a motion if you, give the five thousand dollars to Catcha Ride.
I expect the motion, second. Terry second.
The one comment I will make real quick about Catcha Ride, I think, the first year they came and asked for money, and I'm trying to remember this, and it may be wrong, but I think they asked for eight, and then they came back a couple years later and they were asking for seven, and then last year it was five, this year it's five, so, I, I just wanna make the comment, I think that they are trying to reduce the need for their city fogs, I mean, they are, you know, over time, it's, you know, their request is lowering here and here.
So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion passes, and council, I appreciate your time and your education in this and studying of it, it's, it's tough, and all these things, Big Brothers and Sisters are all close to the heart, uh, treasures, Bread of Life, those are all things that helps our community for the less fortunate, and it's, it's tough. I appreciate your time and efforts, and it's an uneasy decision. Hey, going on, new business. We have a couple of resolutions for maintenance, Mr. Tim Conrad and Chris Felger, from two groups, Fusion Products LLC and Long Nice Nails.
Good evening. My name is Chris Felger, I asked Tim just to take a seat back there, if I, if I need to call him up here, I will, so, I'll, I'll take the easy questions, we'll have him for the top questions tonight, but, um, thank you again for your time and working us into the agenda. I am the chief financial officer at a company named Han Systems, our company's been around in, in Indiana for about eighty years, just to tell you a little bit about us, we're primarily a distributor of construction and industrial supplies, so a lot of pneumatic nail guns, the nails that go in the, fastener guns, the fasteners or staples that go in them, compressors, other, other power hand-driven tools, and just other general construction, industrial supplies. We have a location in Levonia, Michigan, Louisville, Kentucky, our corporate office is on the southeast side of Indianapolis, right off of seventy-four and four sixty-five, we have a facility in Elkhart, Indiana, and also another one on the northwest side of Indianapolis. And, you know, primarily, a lot of our materials that we distribute, um, just being that they're nails, fasteners, staples are imported, a lot of them come from Asia. About four months ago, our CEO became aware of a company that was looking to sell, or, or to get some capital to grow, grow their business, and they're a nail manufacturing company based in Westport, Indiana. And, uh, so we, our CEO met with them, we liked their management team, they needed some more capital to grow, uh, they had basically one half a million dollar machine, uh, running twenty hours a day, five days, producing bulk nails, so, nails you go into, you know, buy at Lowe's, or, um, you know, it's not, that's not their customer, but that'll kinda help you, fifty pound box of nails, most of their customers were pallet manufacturers that use those nails to, in a, in a press type device to manufacture wood pallets. So we bought the assets of that company on November twentieth, and we're looking to grow that business, which is part of the reason we've made these requests tonight. We will increase that and likely have three to four oil machines in the next two years, when we, when we purchase the company's assets, or four full-time employees, you know, now we're, we're up to five, we think that that will, um, be up to approximately twenty employees in the next three to five years, and, um, so we're, we're excited about that. A lot of our customers, um, it created a lot of buzz, just that we were now distributing a, distributing an American-made nail, so a lot of our customers are really excited about having a US manufactured nail solution for their nailing needs. Fusion Products LLC is a, is a new company, as lo, as, as, as nice long nails that we've set up, that will, that will basically house this operations, the, the operating company and the nail machines and the employees would be in Fusion Products LLC, the real estate that we're looking at would be in Nice Long Nails, just for liability protection, put the real estate in a different company than the operating assets. So, yeah, we like Greensburg, it's a good location, only about forty minutes east of where our corporate offices is, in the southeast side of Indianapolis, and, um, you know, it's a good, good manufacturing base here existing, very business-friendly environment, and, and, you know, just some of the comments about, uh, EDC, I'll just say that, you know, Mark and his team, you know, very, um, you know, helpful, you know, offering assistance for us in leasing more real estate in the area, and, you know, we're very appreciative of that, and, and also appreciate the time of the mayor and, and, uh, other individuals that we've met with over the last three weeks, as we're evaluating where we'd like to locate this segment of our business at. That's just kind of some general information about me, I don't know how, how detailed, I've never done one of these before, and how much detail we wanna get into on the, um, requests or not.
A little history of the EDC, there's a loan paid to ask them to get started financially. They probably were a business owner here.
I believe that's correct.
And some of the C, such as these people, talk about the bank payment loan, and, uh, now they're expanding, out of late, buying more government and adding on, the number to three hundred percent, still a small number, but small companies are good businesses, and, uh, so we have been looking to pursue a loan with us, first listing, so, what we've done with EDC, the first guy out is helping expand and grow. As you can see, what we've asked for, it's a little different program than we've done in the past, we're not giving quite as much off the top the first few years, and more at the bottom. And as you all know, the reason for this, the value of the equipment is less ten years from now than it is today, so actually they're getting less of a payment this way, this is a mere payment of personal property, rather than the five, six years to go.
So, yes, rather than a full amount, ten percent on down, you are doing what?
Seventy percent across the board.
Seventy percent across the board, which averages out, same?
About same, when you talk dollar about, on the, on the value, ten years depreciation.
I know depreciation, but are you, you're giving it, that may have been on the depreciated amount?
Yes, that's very possible. The real, real price of the, the pressure, right?
And, and who's running the number on this, can we go with that?
I wouldn't talk to big financial boys.
This comes through recommendation of the tax paper board.
That's correct.
Small company, but we feel it could be a very interesting part of the, for, who knows, you know, who knows?
More questions, council? One motion for both? Well, we have discussed the real estate, let's do the minimum tabular. Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two, which is the first, entertainment motion. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion passes. Motion passes. Next item is Resolution two thousand fourteen dash three, Real Estate.
Is the real estate, what's the, what's the timeline of that?
Seven years, with the, in the regular, uh, the regular format, yeah.
I just didn't see Mark here.
Uh, that paper, I have it here, I mean, it's not. This is a building I think they must spend a little bit of money on, both the tornado, both that. Make the purchase price and investment to improve the condition of the building.
That building was on by mine.
Uh, that was G Con rented that for a while from Phil here. Still off the, there's still, uh... Hope they're not being moved.
Yeah.
We hope so. So, counsel, any discussion, thoughts on this? Really give them a payment to make the investment, this small business. I retain the motion to approve Resolution two thousand thirteen dash three.
Aye.
Go from me to Terry, second and five. Blake, Mayor. Any further discussion? I'm not hearing any. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Go same side. Thank you, counsel.